Hi Jim, hi Judy. Can you guys hear me?
I can. Gillian.
Alright, and Judy, can you hear me too? Maybe she's not there. So Jim, when your presentation is up, I'll promote you and Steven and whoever else might be on to a panelist. That way you can share your screen, okay?
Okay, awesome.
Yep. Hi Judy.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Well, this is really weird. Okay.
I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Well, I don't know what to do about that either.
Um, let's see, is your, if you want to be seen, if your video icon, it should be in the bottom left corner.
There's nothing in my box other than my name. This is not something, this format is not something I've seen before.
Oh, interesting. We have you as a panelist.
Yep.
Uh, let me do that. Did, did anything pop up on your screen saying, because I just asked you to start video. Oh, there you are. Okay. Alright, we can hear and see you. We should have other folks trickling in soon.
What is, um, are you there Gillian?
Yeah, I'm here.
Is there something I, I missed about section six? Of the creek walk?
There's not, and Judy, honestly, we're still waiting on updates from our city engineer and our, um, partners at C dot. So honestly, I would recommend that it, it's taken off the agenda until we have official updates on the project. Um, but I don't have anything new since the last meeting.
Well, I'm glad because Tim just sent me an email about this this afternoon. I had no idea what he was talking about. I really didn't. And I, it's like, I hadn't heard anything, but he said, well, you're supposed to give this report. And it's in the packet. I don't, I mean, I, I don't know what he's talking about. Because I haven't seen anything either. And I thought maybe I missed something, but I couldn't find anything.
I think he shared an email from, uh, one of, one of the staff we have involved with the project. Who gave an update. I think that was the email I saw in the packet. So we can review that during that section of the agenda.
Okay, because I, I didn't see it. So.
Hey Judy, can you hear me?
Yep, hi Tim.
Hi, um, it's no big deal. I'm sorry. I meant to relieve you of that concern by sending you that. It's just a, a short email from Josh, and that's all we've got. So.
You're saying there's nothing going on, right?
Thank you for the report. Yes, you're right. There is nothing going on. Um, nothing new going on anyway.
Okay. Okay.
Hey Tim, good afternoon. How are you?
I'm fine, thanks. Is this Jim?
Steve. Oh, you're, you're being funny this evening. Alright.
Pardon me?
I said, are you being funny this evening?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
I can't tell who's talking here. This is, oh, hi Steve. No, I saw Jim's name up here, that's why. Welcome.
Getting there with the video. There we go.
Oh, good. Well, let's see if I can find my picture up here to see what I look like. That might be devastating. Okay.
I don't have the video option, am I?
Jim, I'll go ahead and promote you. That way you can show your video.
Oh, hey Gillian, how are you?
Hey, I'm good, thanks.
So Steve, the first question I'm gonna want to ask is, uh, how do you want to proceed this evening on this?
We have a PDF presentation.
Okay.
That I'd like to share. And, uh, Jim and I will spend, I believe about twenty minutes going through that.
That's probably a plan.
Yep, turns out I actually looked at the, uh, agenda.
Okay.
And, uh, and then we'll kind of, you know, field questions and discussion following that. We want to introduce this as a, you know, as a informal kind of presentation and, and available to kind of conversate through it. Um, but you know, open to however, um, the board wants to, uh, or the committee wants to kind of work through things.
Yeah, I, what I'm thinking is that, uh, after you're done, we'll go through it page by page. Hopefully that'll go pretty quickly. But I want to give everybody a chance to make comments that they think are, are germane to this. Um, and hopefully we can do that in far less than twenty minutes. We'll see. Let's see if I can. That's a little bit better. I think maybe. There we go. That's much, much better. We'll give everybody a little extra time. Hey Robin, thank you. Thanks for making it.
Yep, I did a good job.
What'd you have done anyway? I know it was on your foot, but.
Well, lately I've just been going acupuncture.
Great, great. I'm glad to hear it's working for you.
Yep.
Alright Andrea. Thank you. Uh, that's one, two, three, four, five of us. Okay, we have a quorum. I think Nancy Wilson might be joining us, which would be great.
I see someone that says John's phone as an, an attendee, so that could be her. I don't know.
John's phone, okay. That could be her attending. John's phone is mute, so communication might, oh, I know who that is. I'm guessing who that is. Um, I had asked, uh, now I got John on my head. John Martin, um, from Cedar Heights to, uh, join us. Invited him to join us. Um, that might be him. John, if, if you can, whoever you are, if you can hear me, would you raise your hand? You have a, a selection down there to raise hand. I just want to know who's here. Uh huh, incognito.
Hello?
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, this is John from Cedar Heights.
Okay, great.
I'm, uh, trying to listen on headphones and, and still do other things around the house. I'm sorry about that.
We'll, uh, just go ahead and mute your phone. Um, I guess Gillian will mute it from this side and, uh, you can raise your hand if you have something to say, if that works out for you. Okay?
I've got something to say. Uh, the picture behind Andrea is most disconcerting. The hand is just reaching for her neck. It's just right there. Very interesting painting. Okay.
Yeah. So let's see.
My background is, is very dull by comparison, so I'm envious.
I was hoping Cheryl would make it. That'd be six. TJ was supposed to make it.
TJ's here.
Here, TJ's here.
Okay, no, there he is. He's down there in the, uh, in the sublit area. Okay, hi TJ.
Hola.
Welcome. Hola, back to you. Okay, well, uh, let's get this show on the road. Um, I think I just did, uh, a member check. Uh, okay, Tim Beeson's here, obviously. David Conley, Junie Karnak, um, Cheryl Klein is not here yet. Robin Kovats is here. TJ is here. And Andrea Sutella is here. Nancy Wilson is not here. So we're missing um, Show Klein and Nancy Wilson. Uh, both of those were maybes, so maybe we'll just go ahead and proceed on. Okay, so with that taken care of, um, we have two openings for alternates. And we have upcoming expirations for, uh, uh, Tim and TJ. And TJ, let's both get our, uh, paperwork in, um, the first couple of weeks of February. And then that'll take care of that. Okay, you've got to turn in your paper. I gotta turn in your, a recommendation for you. And I also have to turn in a, a statement that I'm, uh, terming out on this. Okay, um, so we got a bunch of these approvals of minutes to go through. Hopefully that doesn't prove to be too painful. Um, the first one is this revised draft from the July twenty second, uh, meeting where we had the mixed Zoom and, uh, and live meeting. Unfortunately, what came across and what you've got here too is, uh, just section A, which is the first section of the meeting when we had, um, the, the people from Ruxton as part of it. And then there was a second section in the minutes that was section B, which was all the rest of the minutes. And there wa, there wasn't a lot to be done there, but I suspect we're gonna have to have another um, minutes from July twenty seconds where we, we vote on those as well. But, um, does anybody have anything to say about the revised draft of July twenty second?
Uh, I do, Tim.
Yeah, David.
I thought, uh, the minutes were fine. Uh, mine was a, a very picky question at the very top of the minutes. On all of our minutes. It says this is in person at City Hall and via Zoom. And the only one that was in person at City Hall was this meeting, July twenty second. So I guess my comment's a little premature, but if you go to August, September, October, November, they all say these were in person.
Oh, really?
I don't think that was the case. Um.
No, it wasn't the case.
Okay, uh, so it, that's in the form, that's in the pre-printed template. So I guess I just bring that to the attention of Gillian, um. If they're in person, fine, and, but if they're in Zoom, that's what they are. Uh, it just seems like we ought to be accurate about that. But on July twenty second, that was in person. We were at City Hall. And we also had Zoom participants. So, uh, no changes, uh, from me on July twenty second.
Okay, um, I'm just flipping through, down through here. And I don't see that. Okay, um, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as the
Yeah, I'll do it.
Section A of the minutes for.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the minutes for July twenty second.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Yes, Judy.
I'll second it.
That's second, okay. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Raise your left hand. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, um, okay. Oh, Nancy. Nancy, um, alright, let's promote you. I I don't know if Cheryl's gonna be here or not. Yeah, Nancy.
I've been promoted.
I don't know. Do we have to vote on that? Okay, you're shaking your head. That's good enough for me. Alright, Nancy, uh, Wilson has now been promoted as a full member for this meeting. That's great. Um, okay, we're careening on to, uh, revised draft minutes of August twenty sixth.
Well, I have to, I have to amend my comments. August twenty sixth, zoom. I, I'm sorry guys to make a big deal out of something that doesn't seem to exist. My apologies.
It's terrible, terrible. Um.
Yeah.
Okay, I have no, uh, comments on this. Uh, these minutes. Anybody have comments on these minutes? Nope. Okay, all in favor of accepting these min, minutes? The minutes from August twenty six? Twenty twenty four? In favor? Okay, um, Nancy, you gonna vote?
I don't think, I don't think I was at the meeting.
Okay, um, so we have, uh, six of seven, uh, voting yes and Nancy, um, recusing herself. Alright, let's move on to, uh, draft minutes of September twenty three. I should have said thank you to Judy, Judith, was she? Oh, there you are, Judith, okay. Thank you for being here, Judith, as well. Um, okay, draft minutes of September twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Uh, this is Dave. This is where it shows up. A call to order says that this was held in person at City Hall. And, um,
It wasn't.
I mean, my memory on all of this is that the only in-person meeting we had was that July one, um, but.
Yeah, okay, that's that's a good catch.
I made a point because you know, the open meeting stuff and public participation really matters. And so if it, if it's in person, we, we ought to be proud and say so. But if it's not, I just don't think we can say that. So I would, I would move to amend the September twenty three minutes, uh, on section A to reflect this was held via Zoom.
Um, do we have a second?
That's, and then that's the only revision I had to suggest.
Do we have a second on that?
I will second that. This is Andrea.
Okay Andrea, um, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we've got that, uh, and you weren't there, Nancy? Okay, um, we've got six voting yes and one Nancy Wilson recusing. Alright. This is grand. Moving on to a second. Sorry about that. I might have something I needed to say. Was this the, uh, yeah, this was the twenty third. I had some question here. Um, yeah, there's, I have a question on one of the statements here under Palmer Land Trust Q and A. Um, the, uh, stenographer, whatever the appropriate title is, uh, had a, one of the bullets down here is Tim asks about me, asks why four acres wouldn't be added to the large acreage. Uh, Steven explained um, that only wildlife habitat should really be included. I don't recall any such statement of that. And I think what, what, uh, Steve said from, um, from the land trust, from Palmer Land Trust was that there was no good reason to do that. It would just cost us money. And we've already got the, uh, the land trust on the lion's share of the property. And that, uh, Palmer Land Trust doesn't need to add the other property to that. So that I, I believe is what that's what I remember Steve saying. Does anybody have a recollection of that besides me?
Well, that seems consistent.
Yeah. So anyway, I, I'm recommending that, uh, I update this to say what I just said and, uh, um, if we have, if that's acceptable, somebody, um, uh, somebody make a motion to accept that.
Tim, do you want the stenographer? Is that what we're calling Amanda, our stenographer?
I don't know.
Okay, we, it's on video, so we could request that she go back, actually get the, you know, just, you know, the accurate quote from that meeting, if that would be helpful?
That would be helpful. That would make it a little bit easier than me trying to dredge things out of my memory, which is questionable at best.
Well, we can do that.
Alright, uh, so we'll leave that and we'll have to come back and, let's see, can we can we make a motion to accept this with the changes that we just talked about? Um, and then not have to come back and vote on this again?
Recommend tabling it until it's brought back with the changes.
Okay, well, that we still end up having to vote on it again, but yeah, let's, uh,
You want to make sure that text is accurate. I'm sure it will be, but you want to make sure that it is.
Yeah, okay. Well, we, we will table this, um, until the next meeting and come back and check it. Okay. Um, do we need a motion on that? Anybody know?
Yes, do you need a motion?
I move that we hold on the minutes, uh, for September twenty three, pending the corrections that Tim has articulated. Will that do it, Tim?
That'll do it for me. That was beautifully done. Um, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's vote on that. Everybody, four, raise your hand. And thanks. And again, we have six, uh, four and no one abstaining. Nancy Wilson abstaining. Um, alright, careening down through this. We go on to the October twenty eighth. This is great getting these out of the way finally. Um, I am looking through this. I don't have anything here.
I have two items, Tim.
Okay, great.
Um, if we could reflect that this was by Zoom only.
Oh.
Section A and then section F. This is on page twenty one of the PDF. Um, section F, it says that Josh explained the undergrowing, groaning, not sure. I think it's the undergrounding process is what it's supposed to say in section F, undergrounding. So G R O U N D I N G.
Thank you.
And those are the only two I, uh, would like to see revised.
Okay, I had something down here. Um, well, it's not worth it. Never mind. Okay, can we hear a, uh, a motion to accept that change? That, uh, David just made?
Let, let me ask Judy, is, is the right way to do it to, to make a motion that we make those two changes and then table it for, um, for the final? Is that the way to do it?
No, I think we can just, uh, make the motion and then accept the, uh, the minutes with the changes stated. And that way we don't have to come back to it again. Okay, so I'll move that we accept the changes that David just made. Um, do we have a second?
I can second.
Okay, Robin, um, all in favor, raise your hand. And again, I think we have, uh, six of seven. Um, with Nancy recusing herself. And now I will move, and I'm just doing this, thinking about, um, that we accept the minutes as written with the, uh, correction, um, that we just okayed from David. That's kind of a long-winded motion. Do I hear a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, and everybody raise your hand to accept it. And okay, again, it looks like it's six of seven. And now we're careening down to the last one, November twenty fifth. Outstanding.
This is the meeting where we didn't have a quorum.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
It doesn't say so. So I would suggest that in Section A, it reflect this is by Zoom only, was not at Memorial Hall. And somewhere, I don't have a, a big beef about the format, but somewhere right up front, it ought to say a quorum was not present. No official action was taken, something.
Yeah, I don't know if we even count these minutes, but.
Well, we did have some discussion, so I think it's accurate in that regard.
You know, I guess we could go on.
I thought we.
I don't know. Yeah, Judy.
As I remember, we decided that we were just going to have conversation, but it was not.
Yeah, yeah. There wasn't anything official. Nothing was voted on. So.
And you can state that. You can just, you can just, you can just say discussion only, no, no, no votes taken due to a lack of quorum. That's it.
Right.
Okay, and let's do that. Who is taking notes on this?
Taking notes, Tim.
Thank you very much, Gillian. And yeah, let's, let's state that, that none of this was official because of lack of forum. Okay, to state that on the, on the agenda, I think. And that should do it. Keep us from going back and trying to do this again. Okay, that's it. Tim brought up conversation. Yeah, it's about Dole. Griding a road. Okay, we don't need to touch this. We've already taken care of that. Never mind. Okay, so we've got what the heck, we have an October seventh?
We wouldn't have. Oh, that's Parks, Parks Advisor.
Oh, that's the Parks and Rec stuff. Yeah, thanks. Okay, I did look through this. I didn't have anything to add. We don't have to vote on this. Anybody have anything they want to mention in this?
Well, we can give a shout out to Gillian because I think the bathrooms are finished at the pool.
They are. What do you think?
All right, I have not been inside. I will put it on my list. I'll be sure and do that.
I think they're awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. They are awesome. You guys should all go check them out.
Okay. All right. Onto the, the elephant in the room here. Let's see. Stephen, are you ready to roll?
Absolutely. Yeah, if you all would like us to kind of take it away, we can get started.
Please do.
Awesome.
I've suggested that after Stephen's presentation or Kim Lee Horn's presentation that the rest of us go back and go through this page at a time. That doesn't have to beat us up time-wise. We'll see how that works. But it's, you know, it's only thirty pages. We can flip through that and see, give everybody a chance to make comments on it and, yeah, take it away.
Excellent. So thank you all for having us this evening. We really appreciate the opportunity to come in. This presentation will not be a duplicate of everything that you see in there, and we're not going to read through everything word by word. But we wanted to talk more tonight about the context and what went into this. I know a lot of you have been involved in this and those who haven't had the chance, I think it'd be really exciting to, to see everything that kind of went into this here. So now to start off with introductions, we have our Black Canyon Open Space Working Group that was made up of Tim Beeson, the OSAC Chair, David Conley, the OSAC Vice Chair. I would like to mention, since Nancy Wilson is here, I'd like to give a special shout out to Nancy as somebody who's contributed to this plan as well. Gillian Rossi, the Director of Parks and Rec, Cassandra Hassel, the Public Information Officer, myself from Kim Lee Horn, Jim Howke here from Kim Lee Horn, and also Aaron Vincent, who isn't with us this evening. A special kind of designation for our contributing stakeholders that we, we really appreciated working with and having involvement with this, this project. We're Palmer Land Conservancy, city departments such as the MAP Department, the Fire Department and the Police Department. A special shout out to Cedar Heights HOA and thank you, John, for being here tonight. Some of our indigenous partners who took the time out of their, their busy schedules to come out and share some of the knowledge that they have of the site. Medicine Wheel, who contributed during our community sitewalk, and the local residents, who also came out in, in, in a great showing via the public workshop and also our stakeholder in community sidewalks. So just to jump back to where we were and where we are now, we started this project in August of twenty twenty four with data collection and analysis. But really, a lot of you who are here have been working on this project for a number of years. But the master planning timeline kind of kicks off in, in August. We can work up a concept plan through September and then kicked off the actual master planning process at the end of September. We've had various stakeholder sidewalks, public sidewalks and community workshops throughout this time. We finalized the master plan based on our community feedback. And here we are, January twenty seventh, where we are hoping to come together, share this with you and, and get your feedback on it. Now I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thanks, Stephen. Yeah, we also wanted to touch base on, excuse me, make sure my volume's up. Can you hear me okay? Just kind of talk a little bit about the pieces that, how this piece, how these pieces came together and what was driving our decisions and this process, our overall objectives. There's a lot of information here and I'll try to go through it quickly and summarize of it. The team needed to really lay out the next steps, the needed steps, I should say, fulfill the proposed open space goals. And we'll talk a little bit more about those in a minute to kind of move the project forward in an appropriate way. Key to this process was to kind of define the process that would engage the community and the stakeholders. That again would shape kind of decision-making framework that we would follow. We were also responsible for formalizing this process and the way to develop a plan and that the community could support and move forward. And we needed to set kind of the, the last piece here in place, set the project up for success. We needed to reflect on the community's vision. We needed to, this project needed to be approvable. And we also wanted to set the project up for success as we looked at granny grant opportunities. Ultimately, this process needed to be understandable and intentional. And that was part of the team's objectives as we sought to thoughtfully understand and apply the goals and objectives set out by the cities, city, OSAC, the working committee, as well as the number of input points that we heard through the numerous neighborhood meetings in the workshop. At the end of the day, finding a balance is at the heart of this project and the objectives. The team was conscious of the product that needed to move forward, the plan that can, that the city could consider funding, and we needed to be financially responsible in conjunction with the stewardship of the land. This meant, you know, kind of understanding what it meant to limit disturbance on the site, find that balance and recreation opportunities and understand the preservation considerations for a small but valuable lot within the community or valuable site, I should say. We also wanted to understand the balancing act between minimizing trail impacts but also avoiding sensitive environmental resources. So there were some manipulations and some decisions that they needed to be made, made out in the field. The project also needed to provide a path forward for fiscally responsible design recommendations as we move forward as well. So balancing that land stewardship and financial responsibility, a plan that managed the land in a way that preserved and enhanced the recreational value as well as the ecological health of the property. Ensure that the economics, long-term considerations on feasibility and management were recognized. And we also wanted to integrate what we would ask. I guess the big question is, is we need to ask the question about being a good example as we move forward. So integrating those environmental ethics in a responsible way as we looked at the capacity and context of this, of the site itself. So a lot there. We can, I'm sure we can come back and talk more about some of those as we move forward this presentation. Stephen, you want to talk about the context of the site?
Yeah, absolutely. So for those of you who aren't completely aware of the location of the site, we are off of Black Canyon Road, just west of Garden Drive. And here is the site in relation to some of the other resources within the city of Mantoo Springs.
Jim? Good, that gives my throat just a little break so I don't cough too much.
Yeah.
Site opportunities and challenges. The next couple of slides, we'll kind of, we'll talk a little bit more about the site, but also I think initially starting about how do we begin to evaluate the decisions we're going through with this process? And again, finding that balance that we talked about. We, we looked at what some of the opportunities were. Again, this is an all-encompassing list, but we wanted to highlight a few things. You know, about the opportunities for multi-use trails, the natural and cultural resources, the process of community engagement and the, and the great partnerships that were already participated in this, in the stakeholder. And I would say that these are kind of public stakeholders in the sense through this process, but also understanding the challenges. It's a, it's a rugged terrain in this site. We, you know, recognize some of the rosy soils. It's not a big site in comparison to some of the surrounding open spaces that both the city and Cower Springs are looking and managing. But it's also a valuable one. And then we also recognize that, you know, it's, it's, it's a bit isolated in some ways. And, you know, there are some wildland fire concerns and we need to be conscious of that. And at the same time, you know, I'm sure most of us have recognized some of the debris and, you know, waste management concerns, so to speak, out there on the property itself. But those, those challenges and opportunities really do begin to shape where the, where the master plan was leading as well as some of the conversations we've had to further define challenges there. I mean, the rugged landscape also makes it for a special open space within the city system. I think another part of this property, the unique history that's there that we want to preserve with the master plan. And this history also and cultural resources are kind of the basis of some of these, the trail systems that were preserving and mapping out on the property itself. The next slide reflects some of our inventory work that we did. Both natural and cultural resources were a value mapped and inventoried. The map here really looks at the landscape elements along with some of the existing trail elements that were, that are historically found on the property and also recognizes some of the steep, steeper grades in topography within the property. Overlying and somewhat hidden in the scheme of this picture, we looked at cultural resources. Stephen mentioned also indigenous community resources that were identified on the site, some of the sensitive wildlife habitat. And we wanted to be certain that, one, that we understand where those are at. We also need to be conscious of what we're sharing, especially with some of the cultural resources. We're protecting those. So those aren't good to be at the forefront of, of our mapping and just, excuse me, mapping and master planning graphics as part of just preservation of those areas as much as possible. Excuse me, next slide, I guess, is that one? This is your Stephen, I believe.
Yeah, so just to kind of run through some of our cooperating entities, you know, Palmer Land Conservancy is, is a fundamental group that will go on to, to review the master plan and ensure that it's compliant with all of the, the conditions that are in the existing conservation easement. We have the city of Mantoo Springs Mobility and Parking that are going to review proposed alterations to the road, which we'll talk about in the future. That includes a pedestrian crosswalk, the Fire Department and the Police Department providing input on the wildland fire mitigation and management of the transient unhoused populations. CDOT reviewing any proposed improvements within their right of way. The Pike Peak Area Council of Governments reviewing any pedestrian and transit improvements. They are kind of the, the regional resource as far as feedback on, on pedestrian improvements in, in the area. And then the utility providers, we have considerable utilities within the corridor, stormwater, fiber, electric, overhead. And there's, there's a lot of potential conflicts that could be there depending on the, the final design proposed as a part of this project. So I'll just touch on some of the guiding documents that really went into how we formed our ideas, the principles that we came up with. Obviously, the twenty sixteen Parks Open Space and Trails Master Plan had a significant role in understanding the, the kind of guiding elements to all resources within the city of Mantoo Springs. But Palmer Conservation Easement and the Land Stewardship Plan kind of was our cross-reference for anything for applicability and consistency. There was an archaeological survey and report that was prepared that we reviewed to ensure that we weren't significantly impacting or degrading any of the resources within the site. We used a lot of information and from, from our valuable community workshop and the survey that was completed and also did a sitewalk with representatives from our indigenous community who shared some of their perspectives as well. Jim?
When, as we move into the project goals, part of this is, is it's a two-phase process that we looked at. And Stephen had kind of alluded to this early on with our, excuse me, our timeframe and our schedule. Early on, we, we did a, what we call a conceptual concept plan that kind of drove some of the early conversations and, and used it as a primary source of data collection to kind of set the framework up for the master plan. And, and some of you folks participated in that early on. Obviously, the, the working committee was at the heart of that. But we wanted to make sure that we were providing the recreation opportunities for a broad range of users, multi, multi-use users. We wanted to showcase a significant view sheds. We wanted to provide natural and cultural resource context and interpretation, so some of the things that came out of those early meetings. And we wanted to positively influence the ecosystem. And we wanted to positively influence the ecosystem stewardship of the property. And, and those again were kind of the, kind of guiding goals early on, the concept plan. As we moved into the master plan, a lot of those goals then were driven by by the committee to make sure that one, we were, we were engaging with the community in the neighborhood appropriately at the right level. We needed to document our engagement process. Stakeholders, communities, really begin to prioritize the findings, but that came out of this survey. So we'll talk about here in a second. We also needed to serve and respect the local government NGOs and resource, resources engaged in this process as well. And we needed to integrate kind of wildland fire mitigations into the trail planning. Those were some I guess stronger influences that developed out of the goal master planning process. Excuse me.
So to talk about methodology, we approached this in a streamlined kind of thought process where we really wanted to focus on the clear goals and objectives as our driving forces. In addition to some of those ideologies that we have shared with you already. To encourage the early intentional community involvement. So kind of just doing those sidewalks and hearing out individuals and having forums for folks to provide commentary and encouraging, you know, even if they just wanted to write a few words that came to the top of their mind. We wanted to take that input to facilitate more of the data-driven decision-making process. And it reduces the original or, you know, additional rework and revisions from having everybody on a, a similar wavelength. In, in doing this, we hope to you know, expedite some of the timelines for getting through the approval process of obtaining grant funding and, and really initiating the project improvements that are proposed here. So at the two different community sidewalks that we got, the, the stakeholder sidewalk was, it was really great. We got to hear from folks from the fire department and the map group, Mobility and Parking and to hear from other landscape for example, with the city of Colorado Springs. And we heard that, you know, it was a wonderful site. I mean, it, it truly is an amazing, amazing site with great opportunities. But the protection was really important. And a part of that was the wildland fire mitigation, which we discussed with the fire department on opportunities for them to continue to engage. We discussed about the parking on El Paso. Kind of utilizing some of that existing underutilized space on El Paso. And then looking for opportunities for interpretation and education. You know, that was kind of from the the regulatory aspect as we shifted to more of the community or the user groups. There was a large focus on multi-use. Folks wanted to be able to kind of do everything anywhere around the site within, you know, normal, normal means. But it was a really great opportunity for folks to come out to the site and have different opportunities for challenges with their, their physical fitness in mind. So a multitude of different trails from easy to more difficult that would be friendly for even family and, and beginners. And that, again, that topography is a challenge and an asset as you see in the photo here. I mean, it, all of us huffed and puffed and sweat to get up to this point, but the views at the top are, are quite amazing and astounding. So I'll talk a little bit about the workshop. We hosted a workshop at City Hall with, I'd say between 20 and 30 people at any given time. And we took the boards that were present and, and we provided more of a table where folks could enter in their preferences and their priorities and categorize them with stickers. And so what we saw from that is that the wildland fire mitigation and connections to other trail systems were really important for workshop attendees. Multi-use trails, single-use trails and natural trail surfaces shine through in the trails workshop. And the amenities preferred by most attendees included the scenic vistas spaces, separated trail areas and narrow multi-use trails. What was most interesting on a site like this is that we also saw public art make it into the top five of, of preferences for a unique site. So it kind of put in our mind maybe what the opportunities might be there in the future. We had the survey open and encouraged the survey through the project website. The flyer for the community workshop posted on social media and ran the survey through the first of 2025. So in kind of encouraging this, we received a really great response. They were tabulated and illustrated. And this time we used the word cloud to represent the priorities and preferences. So as you see over here on the right, we saw a strong preference for multi-use trails, narrow trails, scenic vista spaces. New opportunities, expanded access, diversity of experiences, some concerns with overuse, some focus on preservation. So kind of a wide range of, of feedback from the community survey. And Jim will kind of talk a little bit about here about how we addressed some of those concerns that, that we found through that survey.
I just want to add one more thing to the, the survey process too. You, you'll see through this process, there's, there's, it almost feels maybe like there's a lot of redundancy. But early on, we began to hear kind of those tidbits that began to develop the vision. And through the process, we wanted to, I guess, test it in a number of different ways. So you'll people got to see kind of those comments and questions multiple times, but that helped generate a more solid, I guess, foundation for the data analysis that came out of the process. So I think that really strengthened and give us, give us a good understanding of, of where people's individuals' concerns were and also where the opportunities lie with their support. But addressing those community concerns, you know, we began to look at what that looked like on the ground as well. And obviously limiting the site disturbance was a big one. You know, decreasing some of the trail widths that were out there, avoids some of the fragmentation of the site by, you know, putting more things in place to control some of the trail development and kind of the social trail development. We really wanted to encourage a sustainable, stable site as we move forward as well. There are some great rocky features and some good solid walking surfaces, but there's also, also some erosive areas that we wanted to preserve and protect. Everybody loved the idea of, of natural surfaces. Obviously, that was at the top. Trans, trans, transit population, excuse me. Obviously, there are some challenges there. We wanted to go through the process that would provide people a lot of access to some of the unique features on the site. At the same time, we wanted to limit some of the unofficial trail access and some of the camps and some of the debris that's been found on the site through this process. The community concerns also focused on, you know, how do we make it safe and how do we move forward with this population out on the site and we consider that as part of more eyes on the park, so to speak, brings safety and control and, and understanding to those conditions. Access and some of the concerns along Black Canyon Road. I see designated some parking along El Paso was, was really the focus of those alternatives within the existing under, underutilized area of that parking infrastructure that's along there. There was definitely some safety concerns about Black Canyon Road. And meeting those needs obviously led us to this alternative with, with the communication and, and back and forth with our stakeholders and with the neighbors. Wildland Fire. Again, as Steven mentioned, we met with the fire department, we discussed those options. And, you know, they obviously they have a great set of tools in their tool bag to help. And help Jillian and the staff. But we also wanted to be conscious of how that moves forward and how it's incorporated into the management of the plan. As we move forward with all that planning efforts on the property. So you know, those community concerns were definitely at the top. Our recurring discussions and those, those elements are incorporated into the master plan. Excuse me. Yes, kind of clear my throat again. Out of those, out of those discussions, we came back with, come together with this public vision and recommendations. All the participants, as we say here, emphasized their shared desire to make a relatively undeveloped natural site. You know, the beauty of the site, the ruggedness of the site was, was where the value was. And that did not, we did not want to take away from that with any actions taken moving forward. To that end, the open space master, master plan, excuse me, created multi-use trail systems. Again, meeting the diverse needs of the users. And also with the idea of preserving and building on kind of the stories in the view sheds of the property. Great history that threads through this property as well as these amazing views that everybody was able to take in as they visited the site. The vision can also be implemented by utilizing, enhancing the existing disturbed and social trails. So again, understanding that the site has been used historically. Can we bring those, those trails into a sustainable condition and to utilize on the site for their limit disturbance on the site, but also tell our story about some of the history of that site as well. Sustainable design practices will play out across the site and, you know, our environmental eyes and desires were reflected here in the master plan. And the project will protect those sensitive habitats areas and promote conservation stewardship values. And again, we want to lead by example. And this property being a great example of, of where we can showcase the community's desires for healthy landscape and a healthy open space system.
Thanks, Jim. Jump down to the next slide here. Hearing the community and incorporating the community feedback again, were, were critical elements here. So you know, concerns related to say access and safety. We're, we're planning to utilize existing parking and access, enhancing navigation both to the site and within the site, the signage. Incorporating some of those interpretive elements and, and displaying the informational signage was was some of the feedback that we received as far as priorities and preferences. In addition, you know, improving some of the trail surfaces, formalizing the trails with a multi-use and multidirectional approach. Having the, within the site loops to kind of accommodate all folks as far as skill levels and interests and, and just avoiding the, the sensitive environmental resources with the trails. On the amenity spaces, folks were concerned with, with the view sheds, protecting the view sheds and enhancing their abilities to gain access to the view shed. So providing them with those scenic viewing locations and, and seating as needed was some of the feedback that we received. And in addition to stewardship, obviously folks who are within the city are, are in tune with local environmental stewardship work. And providing the kind of education opportunities and, and connecting the community to the landscape and the site history are, are really critical. So this is our vision plan for the master plan. Again, we have a, a wide range of, of trails that navigate through the site that take advantage of the existing features, but also features like the scenic vistas that exist in the northern portion and the southern portion that allow us to view Garden of the Gods and Pike's Peak. The Stagecoach interpretive area, as we call the roundabout here. A potential opportunity for a, a multi-purpose activity space and outdoor classroom. As you come up the ridge here, you get to see some of the, the cliff areas that exist in the northern portion of the site. And then, you know, down where you would, you would park, you would have, you know, that access here that would be, that would be improved in the proposed soft surface entry trail to get to the pedestrian bridge and trailhead.
Yeah. And I think, you know, again, just kind of building on those connections and the trails. You know, the open space trail system, as mentioned, or, you know, seeking to preserve the natural qualities of the landscape as much as possible. And creating opportunities through this network of, of trails for those multiple, multiple types of user groups.
Of course, that'll be, you know, one of those things of cooperative, multi-use. Everyone has to work together in order for a, a, a site to be successful. So fun kind of wayfinding and signage opportunities like we see here of, don't be prickly. Please show kindness to other trail users, go a long way and trying to encourage that within the site.
Yeah, I want to provide, again, provide a variety of trail experiences. We want to establish some sustainable smart maintenance design and practices with the property. We want to provide a balance for a broad range of opportunities to serve the visitors of all types and, and interest from those that are, you know, from wildlife watchers to those that are focused on the vistas or the trails of the we want to be conscious and continue to work with those as we pull the guidelines together. On the next slide, we kind of get into the master plan itself.
Yeah. So this will be the trails plan that's presented in the, in the master plan. And I'm happy to kind of zoom in here. We can talk a little bit about this during the Q and A, but you know, again, the goal was limiting disturbance and maximizing potential sighting features via kind of reviewing site constraints, topography, drainages and erosive soils. When you look at the site and how it's laid out, it, it really does maximize some of, some of that use here. And you know, if just going, you know, 10 feet in any direction off the kind of perimeter of the trail system, you start to see intense drops in topography and unstable soil conditions and just kind of opportunities that would not maximize the potential specifically. So some of the featured elements that we've, we've been kind of kicking the can on here till, till late in the presentation are some of the, the enhancements. So we see in this top graphic is what the parking and crosswalk upgrades could look like at the intersection of El Paso and, and Black Canyon Road. We see what the trail access along Black Canyon Road may look like with some of the small posts and, and some trail delineation there. We see what, you know, the, the pedestrian bridge may look like in, in the future. Some seating opportunities, some interpretive spaces and some furnishings and trail delineations below. And all of these are guidelines that can be worked into. And some furnishings and trail delineations below. And all of these are guidelines that can be worked into. You know, the future element selections and and many selections that. That are that are chosen by the city and also chosen by this committee.
Yeah, we also want to hit on again, some of those management recommendations as we move forward to and some of those are some of the social trail closures. We think about some of the more main trails and some of the more passive low impact trails that are out there, they still lead themselves lead to some. In some stabilities within the the landscape. So we're looking at. At this, at the process. Moving forward to. Protect and stabilize the site. I guess again, address some of those encampments that have been noted out there. And just kind of go through and into preserve the natural features, promote some of the or preserve some of the cultural resources out there. Some of that we want to keep people away from. And again, stability, stability and balance of. Management and expenses out of expenditures out there are also at the heart of of some of these decisions and recommendations as we move forward. Excuse me. Success and opportunities. We want to go back. We think the the master plan does a good job of. Bringing in everyone's ideas and understanding the resources out there, finding a balance. To preserve the site, but also meet the recreation. Design and 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 access needs. The project has done a good job of testing community feedback. Stakeholder input and testing in a number of different ways. As Steven mentioned, we kind of try to make sure that we touch base on all of those. Ideas and concerns about four times to test what the priorities and preferences are. The plan does. A good job with everyone's input on meeting kind of the recreation vision for the site. And also. Looking forward as we look at how do we manage in respect to the stewardship responsibilities with this property as well. I think with that, I don't, we don't want to. I guess drag out this too long without getting some more opportunity to. Engage with you guys. So I think we would move to the last slide and just see if there's any questions.
Okay, um. If that's if that's it for that part of the presentation, Stephen.
That's it. Yep.
Okay, I would like to go back. Go ahead. I would like to. Go back through the document. And hopefully this will go fairly quickly, but I I think. I think. The committee. Should have the opportunity, all the members of the committee should have the opportunity to make comments. And. In some cases, those comments might result in changes. So. How should I do this? Should I? Let me see what happens when I try to share this. I've got a larger screen up above. I don't know if this is going to share. Let me. Go down here. And share a screen. Let me see what happens. Not much.
Could Stephen just share their screens again? Could could Kimberly Horn just share their screen like they just finished doing?
I don't know if they went through the whole document. But.
They've got the whole document, I assume.
Yeah, you you've got the master plan at the end of the agenda there, Tim, right?
Hold on, let me unshare.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to share again if.
Okay, let me figure out how to unshare here. Anybody want to give me a hint on that?
I don't I don't think you're sharing right now because I can't see anything, Tim.
Okay, how the heck did I get this thing? I think it's just shared on my screen. Which doesn't do anybody any good, especially me. Okay, cancel. That'll do it. Okay, I'm canceled. It didn't. It didn't share with anybody else? Okay.
Give me one second.
I would like to do that, though.
It's at the end of the agenda. We could pull it up.
Hold on a second. Hold on, let me.
If y'all can see it.
Let me try to share this again. I gotta, there we go.
I think we got Steve's in front of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just like control of. Pointing on here.
No worries. I can stop then and I'll let you.
Let me fiddle around for a second. Okay, let me do that. And I want to go up here. I'll give it one more good try and then we'll go back to. The other idea. Okay. Okay. That didn't work.
And just as a precursor to to Tim sharing as well, we are tracking all of our our comments via comment response matrix. We've already received preliminary comments from the Palmer Land Conservancy on this document as well. So. However, the official channels you would like to use, whether that's sending a compilation of comments to Tim and Tim sending them to us or. Everyone providing them individually, we're happy to address comments throughout the document.
Okay, let's see if this works and then I'll give up the ghost.
If if Palmer has sent in some comments, I I think we need to see those to know. Yeah, what?
Yeah, that'll be.
Are they typos? Are there major concept changes? What are they?
Nope, they said that they were sending an initial letter of support and approval. They were all minor. Minor comments addressed from Steve Harris.
Okay, okay, this is taking the whole screen over. So I will. That's too bad. I'll cancel that. And go back to here. All right. Let's go through on.
Well, Tim, if we all have our own agendas, we could we could just follow through. On the master plan and yeah, just make sure everyone's on the same page.
Yep, hold on. I'm I'm on it. Let me grab.
I'm just trying to figure out how yours is different than the one we've been looking at.
It's not different. It's just that I can point at things. Meeting. Okay.
Yeah, the green arrow at the bottom should give you the option for what screen you want to share.
Dave, I just forwarded you those comments as well. He's not here.
Okay, I'm back. On this, let's start at page one and. Flip through. So we've got the table of contents. We have the introduction. Does anybody want to make any comments on this? As we go through.
Yes, Dave, I would. It occurred to me, the last sentence on background. Says that in May of twenty four, we acquired the Eastermost parcel. It might help to say we acquired the Eastermost four acre parcel. Which greatly facilitates access to the property. Nowhere do we explain that the reasons nothing has happened since twenty sixteen is because there wasn't any access. There wasn't any good access to the property. So maybe we could. Address that in the last line of one point one, just explaining. We acquired the Eastermost four acre parcel. My suggestion is, you know, which greatly facilitates access to the property or which provided access or will provide access to the property something.
I think that's a great idea.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and let's figure out how we're going to capture that information. That suggestion.
Yeah, how are we doing this?
If we don't, if we don't get a tremendous amount of them, I can try to keep track of these comments throughout. And then send over a comment document just for verification for the. For the working group that can submit that to the rest of OSAC.
Okay, yeah, just make sure that you maybe yellow highlight and put a note down.
Hey, I've got mine. Also, the second to the last sentence right above that says the goals established by the land stewardship plan. Since goals is plural, the verb needs to be include. The goals include instead of includes to delete the S.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right. So as we go through, those of us who are making comments. Should note those on our documents so that we can. Colate those and send those off to Kimberly Horn to compare with their their comments. Does that sound reasonable?
I would think that Steve and Jim are doing it at the same time.
Yeah, this will just make sure that we get it all.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not taking notes. I I think that the people making the comments or changes or whatever should be taking the notes. And provide that.
And Kimberly Horn is taking the notes.
Yeah, we'll just we'll just take our own notes in order to check. Kimberly Horn, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks, David, for making those comments. Let's let's plow on and go to the next page. And does anybody else have comments on or does anybody have comments on page four?
I do. This is Dave again, the last two lines. It's not, I don't think it's the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. I don't think they're reviewing this.
Yeah, that should have said department. I sent you a mail a little ago, Dave, just responding to all of the comments that you had initially.
That sounds good.
All of them were, we will revise.
Okay, in the in the. Parks and Recreation Department. Does not vote on. Accepting. The master plan. I don't believe.
Again, it was for review and noting that Gillian was a part of a reviewing entity for this document.
Okay. Any other comments?
And it is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. That's the only board that there is. There's not a separate Parks Board that I know of.
No, it doesn't go to them at all. It just goes to the department.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. Anything on the Palmer Land Trust stuff? Okay, let's go to on to page six. Goals. Comments. Okay. Seven. Pre-colonial history. Okay, so we're going on to page.
Eight.
Eight.
I I did have a question on page seven. Sorry.
What was your question?
My question was, what are prayer trees? Does anybody know?
A prayer tree? Yeah, yeah, it's a tree that's been, I think they're talking. Well, I better hold off on that. We've got.
Steven, do you want to lead that one or are you?
Yeah, yeah, prayer trees are referring to specific areas. That are are known as sacred where people will will congregate. To to express their beliefs in their their different entities and deities. It it varies by tribe.
I'd like to add to, this is TJ. I just was talking with John Anderson, who is cited in this today. At work and. Just bounced a little couple of questions off him about this too, because. You know, maintaining and protecting prayer trees and then doing fire mitigation might seem a little. Counterintuitive. Sometimes you want to make sure that you're not damaging any of the resources or anything like that. He seemed very sure that. With just a little bit of consultation with the tribes and such, that these culturally modified trees can be protected, no problem.
Thank you for that feedback, Anthony. We appreciate it. Yeah, we did a sit walk with Manny. And and Mike and kind of got some more context there. And we try to do a balance in this document between educating folks on. You know, what could be out there and also making sure that those areas are protected by not outwardly expressing their locations and proximities.
Okay, let's move on to. Page nine. Any comments?
That's eight where we are right now.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, nine is wildlife. Okay. Sorry, just making sure we're on the right page. It's okay.
Yeah. I think we, did we jump over existing conditions and sites?
That's eight.
That was eight.
We're good.
Okay. So page nine. Any comments? I have yet to see a wild animal up there larger than a squirrel, but.
You seen tracks, though.
Seen the tracks.
Yeah, it would be exciting to see him. Okay, going on to page ten. Two point four, management structure.
I've got a question. This might be more for Judith, because I don't have experience with master plans on open space maintenance. At the bottom, we accurately. Characterize that maintenance costs are an issue. But then we don't say anything about. Does this project add to that burden? Does this project pose any difficulties? Is that something we auto anticipate? Judith or? Is counsel, is that, I mean, is counsel gonna? Ask us if we've contemplated all of that? And I don't have an answer for it.
So that's a really good question. It's going to come up. It's definitely going to come up, but this is not the the scope of this presentation. While it is connected to the maintenance thereof, and that will be discussed. Isn't this under the scope of this presentation? In other words, whenever a project like this comes to council, it is. It is known that there's going to be ongoing maintenance costs just. From a city perspective, and that's the kind, and we build that into. What the cost, the ongoing cost, maintenance costs are going to be long term and what how much city staff we're going to need and so so on and so forth. But good pickup. You had some really good pickups tonight. I really appreciate your your due diligence. Good question. I don't think it should be addressed here in this document.
But we're okay where we are then on this. Thank you.
Good, yeah.
Okay.
Tim, if I could respond.
Pardon me?
Yes.
If I could respond for a second to Dave's question.
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry. I don't, I'm not showing your. The picture.
A little bit by by way of history. David, we've we've talked about this a lot over the past about maintenance on open space and and there's never been a budget for it unless. OSAC specifically addresses it in our in our yearly plan and in in our yearly budget, we had, which we have done. At various times, but to go back to the master plan, the post plan, in that you'll see that. That that was acknowledged. that that was acknowledged in that plan, that would, that the city didn't have the budget and when we didn't always have the budget to do maintenance. But one of the things that came out of that, one of the actions out of that plan was getting a Parks and Recreation Department for the city, um, which hopefully would avail us of more staff um, to do more maintenance kinds of things. And so, that's kind of the history of it. It came up in the post-plan. It was acknowledged then, and then the, the happy conclusion of that was actually establishing a Parks and Recreation Department with, with, uh, not enough staff, but at least some staff to look at some of those maintenance issues. So, um, and that's the kind of thing that, that we can budget year to year. Um, and, and we have been budgeting year to year, certain specific maintenance tasks.
I have something.
Judy?
Yeah, I just wanted to add this too.
Okay, thank you.
I should. Um, I just wanted to add to it. I, be, and I realize it's not in the scope of this report, but it's something to think about, is that oftentimes, um, these projects seem to acquire fans. And we end up with, uh, friends of, friends of like Canyon, friends of this, friends of that Palmer, like, it's, um, it seems to be a continuing and encouraging thing that we have people within the communities in which these parks are that really do have a vested interest and want to participate as volunteers. So that also ends up helping us and it's not, it doesn't become, other than supervisory, it doesn't become like, well, we have to have employees do the pickup of, you know, trash and stuff like that. So that's another facet of maintenance that sometimes gets overlooked until it happens, but it's around here, seems to happen a lot. People are really interested and they want to keep these, um, beautiful scenic places protected and they're willing to put their feet and their hands where their mouths are. And I think that's a great thing and it's something that just, it happens. It, it happens a lot, which is really helpful.
Okay. We ready to move on? Any objections? Okay, let's move on to page eleven.
Uh, it's me again. Uh, Dave, I've got kind of the same question on fire management. Um, we have some language, but it doesn't say anything about what we're doing about it. Um, Jim and Stephen, you, you both mentioned at least twice in tonight's presentation that you had active input from the fire department. I don't know what it was. Uh, it's not referenced here and seems like we gotta say something. Uh, there is no access to this property. There are no roads through it. Uh, again, I just seems like we're punting here. Um, we acknowledge that it's an issue and we say nothing about it and it just seems like, yikes, um. I don't know what to do about it, but, uh, sure seems like a big omission to me.
Yeah, I think, you know, the last sentence, the necessary mitigation would be best determined in the context of the community wildfire protection plan. Um, is, is reference to what we heard from, um, from the fire department and their willingness to, uh, engage with this project and facilitate some of the, um, the efforts, but we, we're not going to prescribe, um, specific elements of, of fire management within the master plan. Again, this is recognizing that this is an element and, um, recommending that, that, that it, the future of it be determined in context, uh, with the community wildfire protection plan.
Does anybody know if we're working on a plan? Uh, I mean, can we just do a handoff here and say a wildfire protection plan, uh, to be developed by MSFD and the community or?
I think Judy has something to say about that.
I don't know. I don't know.
Judy?
Maybe I can help you with that. Uh, it just so happens that, uh, we were supposed to have Mike Willie talk to us specifically about this topic. But because this plan came up for January, I thought that was piling on. And so I am talking to him now about being the speaker, if you will, at the, in the, in our February meeting. And so that would be a good time to ask those questions because that's what he's working on supposedly. He has the, uh, he has the city meeting, um, with, uh, people in Manitou Springs on, I believe, Monday.
February third.
Thank you. Is that Monday? Am I right?
Yes.
And then, um, I am talking to him about being, uh, with us on our meeting in February. Because, remember Nancy and I went and talked to him exactly about this thing and he wanted to wait till after the first of the year. So is that he- helpful, Dave?
Well, uh, it's real helpful to OSAC, but I don't think it helps this plan. I think the question is, does council expect us to address fire mitigation in the master plan? And if we can punt like this and say, hey, be done in the future, then, okay.
Nancy's got a comment. Just, real quick, this document was already created and signed by the fire department and the mayor in, in twenty nineteen. So this, this is a document that's already been created.
What, what document?
The Community Wildfire Protection Plan is already in place from twenty nineteen.
But. Um, Dave, I, I had the same question
Yeah.
that you have though, but what does it look like in terms of boo- boots on the ground or should they say something like that? And when Judy and I met with the fire department, um, late last summer, we heard that they're in the process of updating the plan and that they actually talked about using this particular off, uh, open space as a potential model for the plan, um, and that they felt like, you know, the plan in con- in this context, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, didn't address open space um, like it needed to, and that's why they were going back and they were actually just had sent somebody to training in, in how to, um, put together or include open space in a plan like this. And at this point, no prescription could be written for what should be done in terms of wildfire mitigation on that property, but they were working towards it. So I don't know if you want to add a si- a sentence about, um, which is, uh, which is under present, uh, consideration or which is being updated, in the process of being updated or something like that, but.
That would help.
They're working on it.
Okay, well, thanks for the updates. I appreciate it.
Maybe by the February meeting, we will actually be hearing about this.
Yeah.
And I, I, when I talk to Mike again, which will be tomorrow, I think, um.
David, did you capture that?
No, I haven't, uh, on this one, um. I mean, my concern is Tim and I and any other members are going to be in front of city council trying to defend this plan. And I don't have any answer on this one other than it's in active evaluation. I like Nancy's, Nancy's phrase, which is, is absolutely the truth. It's actively being, uh, evaluated. So maybe that's, that's the best thing to say is, um.
May I comment on, on that?
Please.
Judith?
Well, just to answer your question from a council perspective, we certainly expect this kind of level of due diligence in bringing it up. Just like the maintenance issue, that it is a topic that will need to be addressed, but council does not expect that you find, bring solutions to those things. Those things, a- as Nancy, uh, so adequately brought up are things that we have to tie into, um, resources we already have in place, knowing that we're going to have to budget for these things and we're going to have to, um, you, you know, you, use our, use our plans in place, but we don't, we, our expectation is not that you come with the plan and the solutions along with it. I, I think that this is a very adequate plan.
Okay, well, thank you. That really helps.
Great.
I'll, I'll come up with some sentence to suggest, uh, Steven, if I may, and let you take a look at it.
Absolutely.
At the very end there.
I've got a note that, uh, you would like some minor updates to this.
Okay. All right, thanks, everybody on that. That helps me. No more on that page for me.
Okay, let's careen on down to the wagon trail roundabout. Page twelve.
I have a question.
Yes.
I, on this map here, there looks like there are two trails from the trailhead coming up. And on another map later on in the packet, there, it looks like there, there are three and, and one of them is a proposed trail and then there were two existing trails. My question was, are we gonna have one trail, two trails, or three trails coming up? That's what wasn't clear to me.
So there will be three different trails, um, varying difficulty. Uh, this map here shows the existing conditions, um, which are reflective of, uh, how it is today. So we've got the, the historic trail that comes, uh, right up kind of the bedrock and then we have the, um, social trail that's being used by the transient community there.
And what is the third trail gonna do? Is that the bike trail?
The third trail is the switchback trail that provides, uh, different level user groups such as bikers or um, beginner or less experienced hikers, the ability to, to make it to the top without having, uh, such a challenging hike uh, straight up the, the main bedrock trail.
Okay. Steven, uh, I've heard it said, I'm not an expert in this, but, uh, that, uh, having trails where you can view other trails is, uh, not, not good design. I can see why that would be said. Um, is there any way that we can combine that, uh, couple of those trails into one trail? So that we're not, uh, we're not, we're not crowding trails on top of each other?
In this, in this instance, there's, there's no other opportunities that really allow for this trail system to be laid out in this way with the design standards that we have recommended here with slope and everything else that come together. Um, there is a lot of vegetation out there and the only instance where the two trails will really run together, um, we can look at in, in page twenty-three, um, which is where we have some constructed steps uh, to connect in case folks decided they wanted to come up the difficult trail and then got out of breath and were extremely tired and wanted to get on to the easier trail from that location. Other than that, we should not have, uh, many instances where the trail nears its, um, near each other.
Okay.
Page twenty-three, um, Jim?
All right. So we, did we just jump around a little bit here?
I was trying to answer that, yeah. You really got to have the map to answer that question.
Yep. There we go. Yeah, you can see how thick the vegetation is in the tree area. The, the only location where they actually get near each other are the, uh, near the proposed constructed steps to connect the more difficult trail to the easier trail, the switchback trail.
Okay. What did you think of that layout? Steven, you think that's going to be adequate for bicyclists?
Yes, I think so. Uh, we walked it numerous times and laid it out by hand. Uh, that's why you'll notice it's kind of a little janky with all of its different curves and twists. Um, this is likely the best case scenario for a site that, uh, has extremely difficult grade changes and, uh, so much, um, existing disturbance to where, um, I think that if there were no trails out there and we were only constructing trail, um, would we have gone with the same layout? Probably not, um, but with the amount of existing trail on site, back to that fiscal responsibility standpoint, it's much easier and cheaper to enhance existing social trails than it is to construct a large new trail system.
Okay, great. Those are good words. Yeah. Okay, uh, let's keep moving and move down to, uh,
Thirteen.
Page thirteen. And any, uh, questions here? Any comments?
Yes, Dave, under local neighbors. Uh, I did send Steve an email about this, Steven, um. He, he's, he's just so diplomatic here. I have to give him credit, but I don't know what the hell he's trying to say in that last sentence. It's imperative that the compatible uses of the nearest residents. I don't know what that is. Huh, be, hmm.
So if we go back to the previous sentence about, um, you know, Cedar Heights, uh, providing, um, their voices for preferences for site improvements, um, they provided that for the property delineation and separation, parking and anticipated uses. So to carry that over to the next sentence, it's imperative that those anticipated uses are compatible uses of those folks, um, and that we have adequately addressed, uh, their concerns with the uses. And it's, it's mainly not the type of use, it's the intensity of use. Um, and their concerns with overuse and any, um, potential near-site parking um, that would exist. Uh, for a while there, I think there was some, um, concerns that there would be some type of on-street parking and, um, you know, we, we addressed those, so.
Okay, I, I hear all that, just your sentence doesn't say that, uh, just doesn't, uh, I just, it's imperative that the proposed uses are compatible with what? The desires of the nearest residents or something or, or the concerns?
The concerns, yeah.
Um, just.
We're, we're happy to provide, uh, some revisions to this, uh, to, to better suit, um, the understanding. And, uh, we'd be open to hearing feedback on that.
Okay, I will try. Yeah, so it's, it's just, that's a god-awful sentence, Steven. It's just, it's just. Woo, all right, moving on. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else on this page? Okay, let's, uh.
I, I had just a, a little note that it referenced, um, uh, was it, oh, I think in the unhoused population, it referenced some fire, a fire in Colorado, but we've already had, I believe, two fires in Manitou uh, that were started from the unhoused population. And so we, I, I, I just thought we, we could put a note in there about, um, you know, right in our own backyard in our own town that we, we did have two fires started by the unhoused.
Good point.
Would the fire department have, uh, records of those fires for us to cite?
Yes, and one was on the incline and, uh, yeah, so you would be able to get that information.
Yeah, if we, if we can help Steven on that, it'll make his job a little easier, uh. I remember them. I don't remember the dates, but, uh, yeah.
I'm sure the fire department does.
Yep, they'd have that information.
Okay.
Okay, um, ready to move on? Let's move on to community involvement. Page fourteen. No comments?
No comments.
Okay. Page fifteen. Fire mitigation. Okay, any comments? Apparently not. Move on to page sixteen. To the,
Clouds.
Yeah, to the trees. Cloud trees. Okay, any comments here? Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, just, just, uh, at one point I thought, boy, there's a lot of F emphasis on, uh, community engagement here, but I think it's a really good thing overall. That it's kind of a CYA thing overall if people come back on the plan and say, well, I wasn't at a meeting or I don't know about, you know. It's always good for everybody to be aware of these processes and that, you know, every effort was made. In fact, you know, three meetings and everything else, so I, I don't, I've, I'm just saying it's, it's a good thing. It seems like it's, it's heavy in this overall process, but I think it's necessary.
Okay.
I, I do think the charts are really well presented, uh, the, the font size, the colors, uh, the scale, uh, those four pages really work for me in terms of presenting data, uh, very effectively. Nice job.
Very good. I'm glad to hear that.
So that takes us through sev- to seventeen. It's really crisp presentation there.
Comments? Questions? Moving on. Okay, this is where I'm gonna ask for your help. Because I have one issue, um, that I brought up before and I wanna bring it up again, cuz I think it's very important. Um, actually on the next page.
Eighteen. You on eighteen or nineteen?
Uh, we're on eighteen right now. We're, if, uh, we're done there, we're gonna move on to nineteen.
Okay.
And let me pull something up, uh, seeing as how I can't seem to get this pictured. Okay, and trail suggestions. Okay. I have a big problem here that I've been harping on a little bit. And I guess I'm just gonna read this to you. My problem here is that, uh, no, nowhere do we talk about the, uh, size of the property or just in, uh, uh, general terms. And I wanted to get something in here that tells that story very, very, uh, crisply. And I, and I think this should be in the national, natural, natural resource, uh, context session. And this is how it reads. Size of the B C O S. Uh, the B C O S is a small open space comprised of only thirty-eight acres of land. To put that in perspective, that's equivalent to the area of a square less than thirteen hundred feet on a side or point zero six square miles. The B C O S trail design takes maximum advantage of existing rock-based trails to provide access to the multitude of B C O S unique features with a minimum disruption of soils or crowding of trails. I want that statement in there because it answers to a lot of questions. One is the idea of putting in, um, that has been presented by, uh, uh, Medicine Wheel of putting in three downhill mountain bike trails within that space. And I think when you get a, a visual idea of how small that space is, it makes it unlikely that that, that that argument is going to hold up.
And this is Dave, in, in today's presentation, uh, Stephen did explain the cliffs on the north side and then the, he didn't say it this way, but the unusability of the southwest corner of the property. Um, so effectively, you're, you're, you have this narrow, uh, middle section of the property, which is where both the existing trails and the proposed trails are planned, so, um, I think that's a real constraint that, uh, Kimberly Horn had to deal with, uh, and did. Uh, but you're right, that, we don't say it real concisely anywhere. I think that would be helpful if we could say something like that.
Well, it has the advantage of, yeah, being a numeric, uh, presentation and numeric, uh, I think most people can, can visualize a space that size and realize that it's, it's not going to allow for a lot of, uh, a lot of waste up there. And also the fact that, uh, the, the trail design takes maximum use advantage of the existing rock base to, uh, limit, uh, uh, disruption of soils or crowding of trails. I would like to see that placed in natural resource context. I think that's where it fits and I think it's an important thing to say. And one of the places that I see that where that will make a difference is, again, and I'm, I'm not beating up on, uh, Medicine Wheel, but they have stated that they would like to see three downhill mountain bike courses.
Um, Hey Tim, I just wanna jump in on that real quick if it's okay.
Sure. Is that Andrea?
Yeah, it's Andrea. Um, we don't want to see three different downhill mountain bike trails. They just had suggested that it might be good to have separated use trails, right? Where some are for hikers, some are for bikers. I think that was their main comment.
Um, they talked about three separate downhill mountain bike trails.
They, they also certainly Andrea's points was their, was one of their themes as well, though. That's, that's certainly correct. Yeah, I just think we gotta mention the constraints that we're working under here somewhere, um,
Agreed.
Concisely, I don't.
I don't know, Tim's, Tim's statement almost sounds to me like part of a conclusion. Do we have a conclusion in here?
Oh, okay.
I think it, I think it fits well in this section. It, it provides the context that you're looking for, Tim. We're happy to fit it in right there in that section.
Done. I'm thrilled. I'll shut up on that one. Okay, I'll send this over to you.
Thank you.
Could, could we, could we also put in, um, how many, uh, you know, miles of trail is proposed? There's, there's no comment about total mi- you know, trail mileage that, you know, for, to give an idea, someone an idea of how much you could do. That's why I kinda like the three trails cuz you could maybe do laps and get on a d- totally, you know, different trail on sections. And because I don't, you know, it's not very big.
No, it's only two miles of trails.
Do we have that anywhere, Stephen? Do you remember?
Uh, we do not, but I will plan on adding that to seven point five, which is the open space trails plan. I can add a total mileage, uh, to that plan on page twenty-three.
That's great.
Okay.
Okay, back to our task at hand. Um, and I think some of this language down here has been modified in the last months or weeks, sorry, weeks, where new trails connecting existing paths. Um, there was language in there that made me think that this was talking about, uh, new trails from who knows where, from outside of the, uh, from outside of the, the realm of the Black Canyon open space. And I didn't think that that was an idea, but that sounds good. Um, anything else on this page? Let's move on. And this is the master plan, uh, layout that we've been looking at. And
Twenty, yeah, nothing on twenty. I don't have anything. Page twenty. Okay.
Page twenty, sorry about that. I didn't mean to flip over that. Flippant of me. Okay, page twenty-one. Anything there? The graphic?
I, I just have a question I wanna answer.
Yeah, Judy.
Is, is the parking area that they show in the corner of this map at the bottom there?
What's that?
Pardon me, I can't quote here.
Oh, the question I had was, how many spaces is this? Is it, is it four? Is it six? And where's everybody else gonna park?
Well, the parking spaces?
Along El Paso, just the whole.
I drove that distance and figured it out and this was about something like over forty parking spaces just along that road.
This is along El Paso you're talking about?
El Paso, yeah.
That parking will be competing with the park at the end
Right.
to the east.
That is a very lightly used, uh, you're not gonna, you're not gonna use up, uh, very much of that parking with the current traffic.
Yeah, Judy, I'm, I'm there like every other day, um, usually in the morning, but, um, I, I agree with Tim, there's just not much, uh, competition unless there's an event going on. Of course, that's a whole nother story. Uh, and I think Stephen includes some language in here, at least I know you did in your presentation today, that the Fields Park parking, huh, the parking that's available for the Fields Park is largely underutilized. That was, that phrase was somewhere, um.
Yeah, we, we mentioned it in, in our presentation today, um, but it is on, uh, page twenty-two as well, uh, specifically calling out, um, the, the parking that's adjacent to Fields Park.
Okay, so, and Tim, when you said it's so many spaces, are you talking about all the way down to Fields Park? Or, or just?
No, I, 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 uh, measured it out from, uh, from the bridge to where the parking ends briefly, up, uh, right across from the, uh, uh, pickleball courts. It comes to a natural stopping point. And there's, there's parking on the other side of that, but it's just those parking spaces.
Okay.
I figured.
I, I was trying to figure this out because I was thinking, well, people say it's underused, but it, I don't think once this plan starts getting implemented and that area gets attention, it will, I don't think it'll be under, underused. I think it will be used. My only question was, how many parking spaces are there really? And if it's all the way
Right.
along the Fields Park, okay, okay, but, um, that was my question.
And what's your, uh, what are your thoughts on it now?
Well, I don't know, because I think this, I think this park, once, I think once these trails are noticed and they, and the plan is developed, I think it will be a popular spot because on weekends especially, it's a nice little addition in Manitou that you don't have to drive in traffic to get to.
Right.
And that's, that's what I was thinking. I, I don't know if it's adequate. Is it ever adequate? Well, it is until it isn't. But I just wondered if we were talking about six or eight or twenty or thirty.
I don't think it's gonna happen overnight, but
No.
We'll have to keep an eye out.
Could, could I piggyback on that for a moment? Have, uh, as someone who lives in that neighborhood, that, that has been a concern of the residents. And of course, at all of our neighborhoods, you know, we don't want to see bumper-to-bumper, you know, parking over there. But I, I think a reasonable, um, argument can be made that the Dillon Mobility Hub, when it is done, especially with, um, e- e- hybrid shuttle traffic, I think i- it can, it can be argued that that will alleviate some of that. So I think that in the short term, um, do we want a lot more cars parking down there? Of course we don't. But we want, we do our, you know, we do really want this Black Canyon open space trail to happen. And I think if it comes up in the presentation to council, I think, uh, I, I think that would be a satisfactory Plan B is to utilize the Dillon Mobility Hub.
Which is, which is good.
Yeah, which is great, yeah.
Can you guys see my screen? Can you see the Google Earth?
No, not right now.
Oh, shoot.
We just see the PDF.
Your people can use that at the same time. The screen share.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I was.
Well, the, the Dillon's good answer, Judith, I hear there.
There, there, I, I just took a quick look in between, um, let's see what street is that, um, Viva, Eva.
Via Linda?
Uh, yeah, it's hard to read on here in Google Earth. Between there and the corner where we have the crosswalk proposed, uh, it's, it's about, it is about eight hundred and sixty feet. Um, which would then, if you, in a normal setting, um, fifty feet divided by twenty-five, you could get approximately thirty-four to thirty-five cars parked in there. So that would cover a, that would cover a lot of ground for parking, uh, but also I can't imagine thirty-five different cars out there at one time, but.
But you also have the Manitou Pool and then you have the, um, there are about six or eight spots, uh, above the pool on El Paso at Garden Place, just on the other side of the US twenty-four Bridge.
Yeah.
But I think there's a fair amount available.
I've added, uh, the note from you, Judith, about, uh, backup parking, um, at the Dillon Mobility Hub, uh, into a section five point two.
Thank you.
The whole, I mean, the idea would be to get the hub up and running so that you encourage people not to drive, period. I mean, that's park there and go from there.
So on that, is there going to be, um, a, a bike rack?
Yes, there's gonna be bike racks, bike lockers, there will be Pike Ride Station, and there is a future proposed bridge um, that we don't have funding for now, a proposed bridge from the Dillon Mobility Hub to Fields Park.
Huh. That'd be great. It really would be.
Wouldn't that be cool?
So, so there, there will be bike racks like close to the intersection there at that crosswalk over to the trailhead?
Yes, and it's also proposed that there will be, um, you know, there's just gonna be shade space and picnic tables and a- all sorts of other amenities along with the bathrooms.
That, are you talking about now at, at the pub or at Fields Park?
That's gonna be at the Dillon Mobility Hub.
Okay.
And where is the Dillon Mobility Hub?
That's another topic.
Yeah, but it's, it's close. It's, it's really close. It's, yeah. Great.
Okay. Um, and, and, uh, Andrea, I just wanted to say that, uh, I wasn't, uh, about to, uh, start beating up on, uh, on Medicine Wheel or Corey. I think Corey did a nice job of, uh, that, um, that concept of having, uh, um, one directional trails and in, in some places, that's gonna make a lot of sense, I think, uh. I think this is not one of those places. It's just too small for that much, uh, uh, downhill mo- like track, tr- traffic and the mountain bikers, so we'll go with it. Um, but we can debate that at some time. We probably will. Okay, moving on to page twenty-two. Um, I have a couple of things and kind of a big one to say about this. Um, twenty-three is regional connections and advocacy. And this says that, uh, uh, administration, blah, 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 the addition to trail systems. Um, Manitou Springs is an excellent local and regional. it's an excellent location with the local landscape being the converging points of many local areas. Anyway, it's calling out, I don't know if it's calling out Manitou Springs or the, uh, the Black Canyon Open Space as an essential hub linking them, the tri- these possible, uh, other trails coming in from, uh, oh, from Williams Canyon, from Pike's Peak, uh, re- regional, uh, forests or forests, Pike's Peak, Peak National Forest other places, other possibilities, and I, uh, my thought on this is that Black Canyon is not going to be a hub
Yeah.
for all those connections. It would be, trying to turn that into a hub like, like, uh, uh, David pointed out, we've, and, and Stephen and Kimberly Horn have pointed out, we've got this narrow strip of accessible in any relaxed way, um, that we're dealing with, and it contained this, this wonderful, uh, uh, cornucopia of features. But we do not have, that area is not adequate to be a hub for a bunch of other, um, possible trails coming into, uh, Manitou Springs, it's just can't post that.
Yeah, so section seven point three is talking about, um, regional connections within the city as a whole, and uses a lot of the information from the twenty sixteen plan. Um, that, the, the goal was to have an unbroken connectivity between the city trails, uh, Manitou Springs Trails, uh, Colorado Springs Trails, El Paso County Trails, and the Forest Service Trails. So, um, this section is about connecting to the community vision, and so we needed to reference the larger overarching document, which was the twenty sixteen post-plan, um, and make sure that we didn't leave out such a critical item, um, in discussing the, the goals of that plan are for regional trail connections.
And I, it's fine, it doesn't save Black Canyon Open Space there anywhere.
No, it doesn't, and that's, that is fine. As long as it's just talking about the
Yeah, I'll, I'll
They just tell me on the Springs.
I'll just get on my soapbox again, that second sentence is just an abomination, just absolute abomination. Goodness sakes, holy cow.
Yeah, I my initial take on this, I, I just wrote next to both of those, seven-three and seven-four, that these needed to be rewritten. And I think that's true. Woo. I think somebody needs to take
Bit of, bit of editing with the run-on sentences.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause they
It would really behoove you, uh, uh, Stephen, to take a sharp pencil to these guys and rework them. Just apply them. Will you do that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, I have it marked for revision, I'm hearing your, your comments of, um, making things more easily readable and digestible to our audience.
Yeah. Okay. I am once again happy. We'll move on to, uh, twenty-two, which we've already talked about quite a bit. The Black Canyon Open Space Trails Plan, which I really like in theory, I just don't want us to get too crowded with those trails, but um, sounds like you've been, uh, worrying that problem yourself as well, Stephen.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, in order for us to provide these multiple opportunities, um, you know, this is, uh, something that we had worked in the concept plan, we did not have the proposed trail. Um, I know, Tim, this is something that you and I have talked about of providing access for more than just, you know, hikers, and so that's where that necessity really comes from.
Yeah. Um, yeah, if we're gonna have a mountain bike trail in there, that's where it's gonna have to be. Got it. Um, and we all, and this, we have always planned on this to be a multi-use uh, facility, so. Okay. Yes?
No, just you said you had two or three points on this page. What else you got? I thought you said you had two or three.
Uh, I guess I didn't hear that.
Or maybe that's it.
I think we've already made those points, so.
Okay, alright.
Um, I will have something to say about maps again here soon, but nobody will argue about it, so. Um, okay, down to page twenty-four.
Well, what about twenty-three?
We skip them?
Twenty-three was the plan, twenty-two
Yeah, that was
On twenty-three, I understand that you got some constraints here, but boy, could, could you go up to the legend, could you increase the type? The font size on the legend, I know you can't do it on the map without some real issues, but, oh my gosh, that's hard to read.
Yeah, this was a challenge, this document's set up in eleven by seventeen format, so when you print it on eleven by seventeen, it looks rough.
And you're right, I'm looking at eight and a half by eleven.
Yeah, I apologize.
What, what is, what's council gonna see? What are they gonna get? Cause we wanna make sure it's
Yeah, we can make sure that they have the eleven by seventeen, and, um, you know, w- we offer to bring over copies for you all, we still, that offer is still valid, if you all need eleven by seventeen copies, we can bring them over.
Yeah, that man has a lot of nice data on it, page twenty-three, nicely done.
I would like a copy. Don't know about anybody else.
Well, it's nice if you get it in electronic format, because then you can just blow it up and see the details in it, so. Okay, on to
Twenty-four.
I gotta yeah, up in that first sentence, uh, building on the trailhead signage of the existing community open space properties, the Black Canyon Open Space signage will embrace the image of the character of the Iron Mountain. I think you could get, just get rid of that first line. Building on the trailhead signage. Blah, 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 the Black Canyon Open Space signage, and skip the next phrase too.
Well, but don't, don't we want in this document so that when we, when they do talk about signage, you know, someone would say, well, well, what's it going to look like, and then they, here they have an example, well, it'll, it'll be the same as, as what is used at Iron Mountain.
Yeah, and they're all the same. No, all our, all our trailhead signage is the same, so.
So ma- maybe they can just say it'll be the, the
Can Of the, of the current trailhead signage or something like that, and don't even need to call out, I mean, you can use the picture of Iron Mountain, but all the signage is the same.
Yeah, we're saying the same thing twice here, and um,
Yeah, to shorten it, okay.
I would, I would argue that that sentence can be much more, uh, succinct.
Yeah, our goal is to show conformity to the, the existing properties there.
Exactly.
We can, we can update that to more specifically, um, state that it's for conformity.
But then, but then in the next paragraph, you say exactly the same thing again, you could just get rid of that too. Where it's, um, each of these titles we does, and then it just says throughout Manitou, well, you're going right back to what you have up top, just make it less difficult or long to read maybe, because you say exact, now we're gonna have this again, this is what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, so that was the trailhead signage, and now we're talking about wayfinding signage, interpretive signage, and regulatory signage. So we're very detailed in providing the guidelines here, because these are what folks will look to whenever it's, you know, what, what should we put up there, um, for this specific item?
And, and, and that's a good point, because we have on, we have, we do have one model for trailhead signage, but we don't have a, we have some interpretive signage that was done by the Fountain Creek Restoration Committee. Otherwise, we don't have good models for other wayfinding signage at all. I mean, any consistency throughout the city, they're working on it, but it's definitely not there yet, so, um, it's worth, I don't know, it, I think that's what's forcing you to have to be kind of general about some of these.
Yeah, and then we hit, it's very specific to talking about the items that are on Iron Mountain, Red Mountain, and the Inman Trail. Have been installed, they're aesthetically pleasing, therefore, all signage within Black Canyon will take the guidance from those, uh, to maintain a cohesive, cohesive theme throughout the city.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I would ask that you just take a look at that and
Right, and
with a sense of parsimony.
Yep.
So, twenty-five, and here's one that I think you'll agree with me on, um, on the, uh, uh, crosswalk. Uh, Black Canyon Road does not intersect El Paso.
No.
But that should be garden.
That should be garden, and I think the people should be walking up Garden Road. That's where the trail is. There's no trail over where the people are walking.
Oh, I see in the photos.
So if you could put some people over there, I think that would make it, there's no, there's nothing over there where the people are walking, that doesn't
Yeah. Definitely, thank you.
Yay. Okay, that's great. Um, so if we're done there?
Um, we don't say it, uh, Stephen, we talked about it today, is there who owns Black Canyon Road, is that Colorado Springs?
There's elements of it that are Colorado Springs, and then I wanna say that there's some C dot right away that carries from twenty-four to that area as well.
But who's?
I think it's a right way, I think it's a Colorado Springs right away for the most part.
But I guess where I was going is, um, do we wanna say, should we wanna address no parking signs on Black Canyon Road, or do we wanna leave that for something in the future? I think our friends in Secret Heights would appreciate it if we did, um, I don't know if we have the power to say that, but
It is not the case now that there is no parking on Black Canyon Road.
Yeah, I know, okay, there's no signage.
There's no signage at this time, it's, I don't think you could legally put up that signage.
Um, without the city.
That would happen.
Without the city of Colorado Springs approving it.
That goes back to kind of the, um, section, where were we at here, the management structure, and, um, some of the, the state permitting and local permitting that would be required, um, in coordination with the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments.
Well, I just know in our conversations, we kind of danced around that, so I wanted to ask the question, but it sounds like we ought to leave it alone. Okay.
You know, as long as we can get away with it, I think that would
Leave it alone.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did, did it come up? I mean, were they were, they're just adamantly opposed to pa- parking on that road? The HOA?
They are adamantly opposed to parking.
But they don't have, I mean, so I think we leave it alone, I, I'm certainly not opposed to parking on that road, and if they have an issue with it, they can take it up with Colorado Springs. It's not our bellywick.
Yeah, let's leave it, okay.
Alright. Done. Anything else?
On page twenty-five?
I was just curious about this, uh, pinch points, uh, within Black Canyon, you trail builders, um, did you read this, and, and what did you think of it? I really don't know, do, do we use pinch points to?
Yeah, this was an element of management of the multi-use aspects of it, um, but they help control speed, um, and also, uh, just kind of the management of the, the trail users. So it's, it's guidelines again, um, that are very specific, but they are guidelines and recommendations, so they don't have to be implemented.
Hmm, okay.
But just for my education, can you tell me where there is a trail that's thirty feet wide in Manitou Springs? I just haven't encountered it, I don't know where it is. That just seems like a really gross exaggeration, but anyway.
Used to be trail, you know, almost that wide, uh, on Intiman. The west side of Intiman, when it was a access road for, um, the fireworks and all that.
Yeah, but that's, that wasn't caused by trailer use, that was caused by
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah. So it's
But right where the, um, Red Mountain Trail, uh, tees in that little section there is, is awfully large, so I, I would say that's our largest section, and it is large.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this pinch point business, it, it would go, for example, if it was in the post-plan, there's a whole section in the post-plan about uh, standards of trail building, and that's what this is, it's just kind of another standard to look at. Um, and it's important here because we're putting we've got little space and we don't want a lot of speed.
Yeah, no, so a tool that's being used, I was just curious, I hadn't, uh, run into that as a trail building item before. Okay. We're getting there, twenty-six. Any comments? No?
I have a comment about, uh, the bridge.
Yeah.
I'm hoping we could get, uh, a more Manitou-type bridge than just a, a plain boring. You know, Manitou usually has more decorative bridges, that's, that's just my hope.
True, we could either, we could either engineer a, a stone arch, Stephen, or, or, or we need to get Steve Wood and concrete couch on the, on the project.
He only decorated them, he didn't build them.
But you're right, Manitou has colorful bridges.
Actually, I think these were the, the cheapest type we could get, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so this was a fiscal responsibility item where we wanted a prefab engineered structure that wasn't wood, again, this is with crossing a, a large drainage way that has the capabilities of lifting up a wooden structure and taking it all the way down to, uh, Fountain Creek. And so, we definitely didn't want that, um, and so we looked at options, uh, and this was reflective of a bridge that is a metal prefab structure with two concrete engineered abutments that would withstand, um, uh, those kind of flood flows that flow through that area. Um, this is again, uh, and a guideline, um, that has all the oppo- opportunity to be refined, um, in the future.
Okay. Moving on.
Yeah. I've got some
Yeah, sorry.
On, on the last page, under, um, out, outdoor classroom and activity space. I know we haven't put, um, the Manitou School District as a stakeholder in all this, but they, they really do have some experience with outdoor classrooms, et cetera, I wonder if it's worth, since we mentioned in here, um, coordination with Os, Osak and Parks and Red, Reds, uh, Rec, maybe, and saying and consultation with, um, School District fourteen or Manitou, the Manitou School District, not required, but, um, is encouraged or something like that. Um, I would, there might be other school districts using it, but hopefully
I would, there might be other school districts using it, but hopefully our school district would be using it the most, and they really do. They have their own outdoor classroom on the campus of the elementary school. They have an outdoor classroom on the ca- campus of the middle school. And I think they're worth consulting about what works in terms of outdoor classrooms.
And that's a great idea.
There's a, there's a, there's another outdoor classroom, but nobody thinks about it anymore because they've Parks has closed this Rainbow Falls down so many times. There's a beautiful, that end of, at Rainbow Falls with that stonework amphitheater type seating. That is another outdoor classroom.
That sound like something you'd be interested in pursuing, Judy? Yeah, you were just talking eloquently about it, so.
Well, it is. If you've been there, you know it's beautiful what they did, and they did it all with rocks. It's all rock that they, you know, shoveled up from two floods.
Actually Andrea might be the one to pursue that. Andrea, does that sound like it fits in your bailiwick?
Um, I could speak on behalf of Palmer High School downtown, but not Manitou School Districts, but.
Is that a sidestep?
That was an honest answer.
Okay, um, well, maybe we'll talk about that some more, Judy. Okay, moving on. Um, Trail System Guidelines, page twenty-seven. It looks like we're.
I had asked Stephen about those distance markers. I just never have seen any on any of our other trails, so. I thought it was odd it would show up here. Uh, with Steve, Stephen, I think you had advised me if we installed them. Again, the point is they're, they're, they're minimal, they're small. So that's, that's okay.
Referencing back to the Ring the Peak Trail markers on page twenty-four. Those little distance markers can be good ways to direct folks around the site, especially with the loop style systems that we have. It's easy to show information on them and they're relatively affordable and you can get a lot there in that kind of vertical column.
And they're low maintenance.
If I can talk about side seating for a minute. I hate to bring this up, but Osak does have a policy on seating or, or memorial benches, I think is what the policy is called. Um, and this would be something for Gillian. I don't know exactly where we put our hands on those policies, Gillian, but we did adopt a policy on memorial benches. And I'm just anticipating that, that uh maybe there should just be one line in here that says. I don't know how people feel about saying something about memorial benches or uh approval of any seating or something like that, but we decided for all of the rest of our open spaces, any seating would have to be approved. Any signage on seating would have to be approved um in advance. And that we had to work with the city because they would probably be installing it, so. I don't know. Seems like we might, might want to say something like as concerns memorial benches, see policy XYZ with the city.
Okay, Nancy, who did that? Uh, I remember that, and I remember we went through, probably went over it several times. Before it got approved. Was that all seating or just memorial seating?
No, it came under memorial benches. People want to put memorial benches on our open spaces to commemorate folks, um, and that's why we.
And we also said that.
I don't know if we have to put it in the document. You know. I think, I think memorials are gonna come up and.
We already have that.
Maybe we should, if, like, just one sentence that says memorial.
Yeah, that's great.
Seating must be approved in advance under, or, or must be approved in advance or something like that. Any memorial seating.
I think it's by the city, right? Has to be approved by the city maintenance department. We had something in there like that. Because I remember the other part of that was if the seating deteriorated and the family wasn't willing to pay for the maintenance, the city would take it out.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we're.
But I think it's.
I think those things are gonna come up by themselves.
They are already. We have a, there is a policy.
I think it's important to just put one line in here.
Put it in.
Any memorial seating must be approved in advance by Osak and the City of Manitou Springs. That's all.
Good job.
Sold. Okay. Anything else? I have a question. What is this green box over here?
It's a waste receptacle.
Airproof.
Airproof trash container.
Okay, it looked like we're trying to, trying to. Catch squirrels or something. All right, on to twenty-eight, Trail Design Standards. I think that's pretty much boilerplate.
You could put the pinch point business if you needed to.
Lay-by path.
Onto uh twenty-nine. Social closures.
Hello? What's a way-by path? Way-by path. It's the last sentence of that, of page twenty-eight. What is that?
Of twenty-eight?
The one you're on.
Implementation timberstone.
Possible and lay-by path. What's that? It's in there. I don't know what it is.
So that's the sidestep if there were um conflicts. So that's the, the get off the trail. So the horse can pass by.
The bump out.
Yeah, it's a small bump out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Horses, we haven't thought about that.
That, you don't have to worry about that. Because it is so small and so, it will be so uh crowded in terms of horses. It will, that people won't, there's no trailer parking. Want to do this. They want to go where they could be there all day riding, where they know the trailers are, are out of the way. Yeah, no, you, I, that is not going to become a place where people, I, I really believe this. They're not going to want to ride there. The trails are too short. There's no parking for trailers. There's no reason to go there. Thank you.
Accommodations. Okay, um, page twenty-nine. Comments, concerns? Okay. Page thirty. Restoration. All right. That's it. Well, that's almost it. Anything further? Anybody wants to uh add to this?
I'll just thank you to Stephen and Jim. Nice job, a lot of work.
Absolutely. Lots of work. I gave you guys a hard time. And uh you came through it smiling and, and kindly, so I appreciate that.
Of course. I will say this is probably the most robust streamlined master plan that's ever existed. And uh we're always happy to hear all of your comments and concerns and include additional information as necessary.
And one other thing, Stephen, I'd like to say congratulations. You're probably a father now, aren't you?
Uh, probably Tuesday of next week, so we still have a week left.
I jumped the gun a little bit.
Yeah, but no, I appreciate it.
Congratulations anyway.
Are we, are we uh thinking we ought to be at that presentation on February eleventh?
Yeah, what's our plan?
What's, what's, what was the question?
That's, that's when the city council will get this presentation on February.
Um, we have to vote on that tonight to say that we're approving it for city council. And I think we should do that right now.
How do we do that with these edits that are coming forward?
Yeah, maybe we do it the same way we do edits in the minutes, say with the edits discussed and approved um during this presentation. During Osak's um, um examination of the, of the document. And, and Kim Lee Horn's approval of our, our.
So we uh, so we authorized Kim Lee Horn and uh and I'm gonna add Gillian to that, because uh it's got to get to the council to uh to publish these changes and uh we recommend the, the revised plan to council for approval, something like that.
Yes. Write it up, and you have to get those to uh Gillian by, I forgot, what's the date, Gillian?
The date for this city council presentation at the work session is February eleventh. So we'll need the revised master plan a week before then.
So that's just right away.
Wow, that's fast. Next, next week.
That's next week, but we're not, we're not doing major changes on this, so. What do you think, Stephen? Can you get this done by next week?
Absolutely. With the tracking all of these comments and the comments from former land conservancy, we should be able to get those done within, I'd say, uh, end of this week. But I will have them to Gillian for sure um by Wednesday of next week.
There we go. Um, David, do you want to write up a, a motion?
Yeah, let me make, let me make that motion that I tried to outline that um that we adopt the uh Black Canyon Open Space Master Plan as revised in this meeting. And we um instruct, it seems a little, little harsh, but instruct Kim Lee Horn to uh make those revisions and submit them to uh Gillian Rossi. So that it can be uh on the work session agenda for February eleven.
And I, and I think we ought to have a chance to take a look at those individually. Um, if we request that uh from Gillian.
Yeah, if we can help with the final proofing.
Yeah, I think that would be. I would like to take a look at that. Uh, I know you would, David.
As I, as I made it.
Yeah. I don't think Nancy's gonna come back to do that. Okay.
You need a second on that motion and a vote.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a second on that.
Thank you, Rodwin.
How many people do we have left here? I can only see a few. Hey, um, uh, Stephen, could you uh um unshare?
Jimmy, you want to help with me though?
There we go. Now we can take a, a meaningful vote. Everyone in favor of um the motion? Well, does anybody else have anything to say about the motion in particular? Then, let's vote on the motion. Uh, everybody in favor, raise your right hand, please. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have a unanimous vote, including Nancy Wilson. That's it. Let's move on. We can do this. We can get there. It's, it's only eight thirty-one, okay.
Bedtime, dude.
Yeah, let's move quickly, okay?
Well, from the Kim Lee Horn side, again, we'd like to say thank you for having us this evening. We really appreciate it. Um, Nancy, great having you come back for this specifically. Hope you're doing well. And uh we will get those revisions over to you as soon as possible. So unless uh you all need anything else from us, we will drop off now.
Thanks, Stephen. Thanks, Jim.
You all have a wonderful evening.
That's great. All right. Where am I at? Where is? That, um, okay. All right, we've done Black Canyon. All right, Creek Walk, uh. Let's see, Judy, do you want us to give, you want to give us that long spiel you've been preparing about?
Nothing happening. That's the end of it.
All right, nothing's happening.
That's been the easiest thing of all, just because nothing's.
Great. We're done. Fields Park Creek Walk, Bill Bauer Trail, um. This is kind of strange. We might want to put this off to next week. We've got two separate two different uh takes of the I'm sorry, the survey questions. Uh, there's two different takes on that. One of them includes a uh question about, uh, do you want a uh do you want a path? Do you want a uh walking trail? Do you want this or that? One of them doesn't include that question. And I wonder if we just want to uh postpone this for, till next, next week, till we get.
Where is this survey? Where, where is it? Where is the written survey? I thought we were gonna do an outreach program. I'm lost.
Yeah, on page sixty-five.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, page sixty-five of the packet.
Yeah. And this one doesn't contain. This is an older survey. I don't know how it got in there. Um, I've got a, I've got the one that I sent um to Alicia. But somehow this got messed up a little bit, and I would say that we can just postpone this until next month. Then there's no hurry on this, unless somebody knows, no, I mean, we don't have any, we don't have the property. So we're not gonna do anything radical about this, so let's just po- postpone this. We'll go through another iteration on this and, and then vote on it next month. Yeah.
Um, it's Dave. I, I join you in doing that, but I do think it's worth reminding ourselves that uh the members of the committee and the communications we've had have kind of implored us to make sure we do this community input early in this, not later. So it's, it's still uh the next step uh to happen is that we gotta do this.
Right. And I had asked, uh, I'd asked Jess Wilson and um her people to show up at this, and they did not. So I'm gonna take the sign that, that it's not a it's not a tremendously important thing at, at this time, but I, I take note that we do need to get this done. Yeah, Nancy?
Just, just a, a thought is, is um, you know, where, where it fits in your whole priorities and budgets. I mean, now you've got a master plan and hopefully it'll be approved for developing the Ba- Black Canyon Open Space. And it seems to me the last time that we did our long-range planning black, developing that property was, was way ahead of developing the Bill Bauer property. And so you may not want to spend any money on Bill Pow- Bauer until you unless you decide to, until you proceed with developing Black Canyon.
Well, I, I think the, the survey is not going to be a big expense. And it shows, shows good faith, and it may, it may drive us in one direction or another. And we'll have to decide about that. For now, um, is, can I hear a motion to postpone the uh Bill Bauer survey issue until next month?
I make motion that we should. I make motion that we should delay debate on this issue until the February meeting.
I'll second.
Everybody in favor, raise your hand. Thanks. Okay, we've got a, uh, a seven, a seven vote again. A unanimous vote. I know the word. I know it. So we can carry on and I had some words about, uh, these maps and I don't need to do that right now. Um, anyway, that takes us over to the REMFIE issue. And I, we've all seen these, uh, this, this stuff from REMFIE before. We had a good conversation on that and, um, I think we should vote to approve the, uh, well, I should put this out there for conversation. I, I think where we came to and I, I agree with Judy that there's no s- sense of being, uh, uh, too cheap about this. It's going to cost us in the end. I think we just need to go out there and bite the bullet and say we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, accept the, uh, the. I'm trying to think of the amount that they want.
From, uh, twenty thousand to twenty-seven one hundred.
Yeah, which is a, a healthy increase.
Can I have a quick question? This is Andrea.
Yeah.
Uh, were you gonna have a meeting with REMFIE? I.
Yeah, Carl Woody. Yeah.
I did. Yeah, I'm sorry. I should've mentioned that. Um, it was a tense meeting. We had coffee, laughed a lot and, uh, decided that we're just fine and friendly. No, I, I had a very easy, uh, meeting with him. We just talked for a little bit about, uh, how things got um, a little bit sideways as far as the com- the communit- communication goes. And that's as much my fault as anybody else's because the communication started going through, uh, um, Jillian instead of through open space. And I didn't make any attempt to change that. Um, so anyway.
But our plan going forward, I mean, I overall really think it's better to have the communication go through staff and Jillian as opposed to us. I mean, just that puts a lot back on volunteers, you know? It's a tough one to keep, to maintain. So I know it's like.
I'll say, I'll say this, as, as the chair, and I won't be very long, um, that it's imperative to be able to, uh, call people up and, and have them get back to you. It's imperative that they know that the money's coming from O S A C and therefore you want to answer your phone. That's, and that, that's just a coordination problem with, uh, with Jillian to make sure that we're getting the information. I kept looking for, uh, to Carl for that information. That information was probably more, more available through Jillian. So I, I think we, we're okay on that. I don't wanna minute, um, micromanage, uh, uh, REMFIE. Either, I, not that I could, but I, I ha- asked the chair, I do have to keep track of the money and where it's going and if the work's getting done. And if not, are we gonna buy, pay somebody else to, uh, take care of that? And I'm glad you brought that up because I finally had a conversation with, uh, Tony Boone. And, um, as soon as the, the snow, uh, melts away, I'm gonna send him some pictures. And we'll get him and his company Timberline, um, out there to give us a, a quote on the steps, the, uh, steps out of, uh, Wildcat Gulch. The staircase out of.
We can talk about this later. Yeah, oh, good. It's getting late.
I know the, I know the REMFIE has, uh, said that they would do it for four or five weeks' work. Let's see what, uh, Tony Boone has to say. We might, we might not wanna eat up all of our REMFIE time on those stairs if we can hire somebody else to do it. And I, I think it's good, it would be good for O S A C to have another, um, another contractor that we could go to when we need to. Okay. All right, so that's where that's at. And do we have anything else here?
I, I just need to make sure, is everybody okay if we do have Mike Willie next in February? If you're also gonna, you're gonna, is, is that a good thing is to, do I have him come first? Do I have him just sit there waiting? How does that work? I don't, I don't know what I'm.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your first part of your question.
Willie, if we're gonna have him in February for wildfires mitigation and O S A C interest in how we're ma- gonna fulfill this mandate for fire mitigation.
And who, what was the name again?
Mike Willie.
Mike Willie. Okay, I thought you were saying Pike Willie.
But I just need to know how, what I tell him. If everybody, first of all, if everybody wants to do this in February.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to hear from him, sure.
Yeah, I would like to hear from him.
Okay.
Is he gonna, do you know, is he gonna have anything in our packet to kinda bring us up to speed or is it all gonna be?
Well, I think, I don't know what they have accomplished. I know that they're doing this thing in the church on next week, on the third. But that is that whole, I think is the slant is home mitigation, not what we're talking about. But that's for the residents of Manitou and that's at seven. But I'm assuming, he said he's working on this, you know, our side of it. And so I just need to catch up with him and say, how about February? Cuz it was supposed to be January and then didn't happen cuz of this. So if everybody's okay with that, I will do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Judy, you just asked him to put him on first under new business and then he won't have to wait around too long.
That's what I was thinking. Is that okay, Tim?
Yeah, remind me, please, um.
Remind you when? When do you want?
When you get this guy lined up.
Okay.
All right. That's good. Thank you and.
Or do you guys wanna do a REMFIE vote or you wanna wait on that?
Oh, good point.
Cuz I will make a motion to, uh, recommend to council to, um, hire REMFIE at the increased rate of twenty-seven thousand dollars in sum for twenty fifteen, sorry, twenty, twenty-five, fifteen days' work.
And I second.
Judy's got it second.
Everybody in favor? Okay, seven again. Um, the motion passes. Jillian, I'm sure can get the word to REMFIE. And I think, let's see, I just, I mean, okay, those are all. Ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end.
Wait, Tim, can I do my very quick, I promise, like, one-minute report?
Yes.
So, real quick, just some bullet points. We do have updated wayfinding signage ordered for the trail system. Essentially, we're replacing some signs that have been damaged or worn down over time. David, you'll love this. We're adding some wayfinding signage to the sections of the old Intiman Trail where there's no signage. Um, so we are working on that. Our sign shop is active and our staff has been trained on how to use it. So we're really excited for that. Um, I also have a guest speaker. If you guys are open to hearing from Fred, he's our planning director. He's gonna be working on the rezoning. Um, Tim, you know that document you have of all the miscellaneous parcels that need to be rezoned as open space? Fred is working on that and he would love to share. Yep. So he would love to also be at the February meeting. Um, his should be short, but I don't know how many questions the committee will have for him. So, um, I think it'd be smart to put him after Mike Willie. I, actually, either of those could go long, but, um, if you're open to it, he's available to be at that meeting. Uh, let's see. And then our trail team, they created a, a maintenance outline for that hairpin turn on the top of Wildcat Gulch. And they're proposing it to the Pike's Peak Trail Cats who are accepting, um, ideas for volunteer workdays this season. So we have a really great document. I'll send it to you guys. Uh, they just finished it last week. But we're, we're hoping to get some volunteer help for that section and not have to contract it out this summer. So we can use.
You're talking about the small washout that's above the Wildcat Gulch?
Yep. Yeah, that hairpin turn.
Yeah.
So we can save some of our REMFIE dollars elsewhere if we want to. Um, and then I actually won't be at the February meeting. Josh Farmer will be in for me. I'll be visiting my sister in New Orleans. So, um, I, I'll miss the meeting. I'm sorry, but I won't be here. But I'll make sure he has all the notes and he'll take down any questions that you guys have for me at that meeting. And that is all I have.
Who was looking at the, the zoning stuff? What was the name?
Fred Rollenhagen. He's our planning director.
Yeah, he's planning director, sure, okay.
Yep.
Okay, um. All right, and I'll leave you with a question, Jillian. Are, or is, um, um, Juan, uh, I forgot his last name. Juan, the, uh, director.
Alvarez.
What is the status of painting that, um, space on Crystal Park Road to allow for uphill bikes and pedestrians?
Uh, from Crystal Hills.
I've been asking this question for two years.
Crystal Park or Crystal Hills?
Yeah, Hills.
Crystal Hills.
Uh, Tim, I still, I still owe you a meeting with, uh, Juan and Roy on that. That has, I mentioned it to them. They're willing to talk about it again, uh, but I have not set that up yet. So thank you for the reminder. Um, and I'm happy to bring that up with them and, and get something scheduled to talk about it, okay?
I, I, I think if you can slow roll this for two months, it won't matter.
Okay, sounds good.
Like it's winter.
No, actually, I really do wanna talk to them about that. It, it seems like such an easy fix for, uh, a li- not a big problem, but, uh, a problem, yeah. Okay, good enough, um.
You guys, if you want Fred on the agenda for next month, uh, that will require a motion. The planning director.
Well, we're gonna have two. Do we want a third person? I don't know.
I mean, whatever, Jillian.
Okay, well, um, can we have a, uh, motion to request, uh, Fred, uh, Rollenhedges? Um, the planning director, join us for, uh, for
So moved.
The February, um.
Nancy moved, I second.
All in favor? Raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Okay.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, yeah.
It is so bedtime.
Good night and thank you all for coming.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.